The jury, so what they want to do is they want to, uh, clear up some things, so if you don't mind, this is a self-record.
Frank Duffield, town attorney, the town attorney on behalf of the town.
Alexander Watt on behalf of Neil and Elizabeth Anderson.
Christopher Seney on behalf of the county.
Why don't you sit down for a second? Have you had a chance to talk to each other since, uh?
No, we filed our briefs, we have talked, this may come in.
Well, I assume that some of these folks are the individuals involved in the case. Do you have representatives of the town here as well?
I have a number of lawyers, right? The vacuum office.
Good afternoon. Uh, you answered like one of the questions I got. And I'm glad for you, she's here, because one of the things I want to do, uh, is I want to, uh, call for everybody, and I know the attorneys know this story well, in fact, Mr. Duffy in particular, your associate, because Harris constantly reminds me of limitations on the scope of review for these kinds of cases. So, uh, Miss Harris, she's in your own office, isn't she? Yeah, okay. And, and, and you folks know exactly what the scope of review is for, for something that comes under thirty-eight, search and arrest, in this case, forty-eight, section seventeen, and it is a matter that at some point in the future will be heard, they know of. But with the deference that's required by the statute and expected, uh, and that the, um, findings of the court, whether it's a ZBA or some other agency, will not be disturbed unless it's based on illegally untenable grounds or whether it's whimsical, prejudicial, arbitrary. And so I think just to clear the brush a little bit before we get into any equitable remedies that might be committed or granted, um, I think it's important that the parties that are represented by you, uh, understand that this court is a gatekeeper to make sure that there have been no due process violations, and there have been none. Uh, and that, uh, the case, uh, the findings of fact based on evidence is not reasonable, arbitrary, capricious, and I want to assure everyone from the beginning that that's not the case. I appreciate the arguments that were raised by Falmouth, which beguiled to, uh, any kind of statutory immunities. They were fully considered by the court, you raise them again, and I'm not going to change my mind on it. But also, I would say, that when you get into a statement of the law, uh, I will quickly concede that I'm not the last word on it, and I think you folks know that two out of three of California judges could very well say that my reasoning is not sound, and that the cases cited two, um, don't, do not give support to your case or contradict them, but, uh, tell them like that, so I think it's important that your folks know that, that, uh, the vagaries of, uh, the health process. And, uh, I'm content that I'll be able to get into the remedies, and, uh, Falmouth has provided us, as requested, in fact, you, the affidavit and supporting documents concerning the financial impact that any order by the court might have on the municipality. And, uh, I'm assuming that the abuders, uh, Attorney Watt, Attorney Schwartz have read them, I'd assume so, and I'm sure that you're familiar with them, and, uh, and, uh, I'm, uh, hopeful that you've considered what impact, if any, an order is questioned by your clients would have upon the town, and I'm gonna expect as, as, if all we need not repeat, that you'll be sensitive, uh, to those concerns. And, uh, also, your buddies have presented affidavit and supplemental materials concerning the impact on their health and the fairness of their fair use of their property, and I'm trusting that you're going to be very sensitive to those concerns as well, um, and, uh, be, be responsive to them as well, both sides be responsive to each other, serious issues that were raised by both sides. Falmouth has done what I asked him to do, and provided me with a, an affidavit from Mr. Gore, who, uh, he's either building inspector or commissioner, building commissioner. It was very detailed and very thorough, and it was indeed responsive to the direction of the ZBA in the original order, which he chose, and I'm gonna say that he had some pretty good reasons for doing it, I'm not saying that he was right in doing it, but he chose not to do it because of dependence on his appeal. I don't think he was trying to avoid his obligations, and I think actually his reliance on, on, uh, on, uh, the, uh, appeal and probably direction from council and, and town fathers and mothers would have been, uh, well-placed, but in any event, he did do it, and I do have some guidance, and, and it was, it was, uh, I'm gonna suggest to both councilmen, the abuders, that it was, it was responsive, it was very responsive, and it's something that I'm gonna insist that you and your clients consider in terms of, uh, of, uh, some progress that this case might take. What I'd like you to do, since you haven't spoken yet, and since the town has presented evidence of, with substantial documentation, but who could probably rely basically on the affidavit from, uh, why do I forget some of the names, but the town manager?
Yes, correct.
Um, it, it, it accurately, um, presented information from the supplements. Now, you don't have to agree with it, you don't have to agree with its conclusions, and you don't have to say that it shouldn't weigh finally in the balance, but I want you to be very aware of it, 'cause I am, and I'm sensitive to it. And Mr. Duffy, uh, since you, you can sit down, but since you do have someone from, uh, the town that has, uh, so some kind of, uh, to give you some direction and perhaps some settlement authority, I want you to, to, um, understand that, uh, the claims of physical injury would not have recent contrivance, that none of the abuders that raised claims of physical intrusion are hypochondriacs. There's something out there that happened, I don't know how actionable it is, and I don't know what the results should be, but I want you to be sensitive to the fact that we are injured somewhere. And the other thing that I want you to be sensitive to, it's the fat-finding mission by the ZBA was, um, involved rather, approximately twenty site visits, where they reported their findings of what they heard, and I'm presuming that none of those members were deaf, and when they said that there might have been a, a level of noise different than the routine background ambient noise that they reported, that they have to be given some measure of credibility. Now, I'm not saying that that's enough to be able to shut down the facility, I'm suggesting to you that I'm expecting that everybody be sensitive, that this is a serious issue for the parties that brought the complaint, uh, and that things happen to them, their, their, uh, their, uh, reaction to the noise over the past several years, the pressure that they talked about, it's palpable. Now, I don't know, I'm gonna reserve on saying to you how I feel or, uh, how I shall feel and how I shall report my views on, uh, on, on how that impact will result in any remedies on it today. But I want both sides to be aware of the each other's position, so that you can, uh, consider the consequences of any order. So, what I'm gonna ask you to do is, I'm gonna, actually, I'm gonna direct you to do it, I get to do this. I'm gonna tell the lawyers that I'm gonna ask you to go out, and I want you to have a discussion based upon some of the things that I said, because I have some other matters that I want to address. I'd like you to have a worthwhile and meaningful discussion, and I don't want to have it, I don't suspect that you folks have seen all of your things. Mr. Schwartz, have you had the pleasure of your company a lot here? I don't think so, but I-
My associate is Brian Ford, my name is Christopher Seney.
I'm sorry.
We work together in the same room.
So, obviously, we haven't had the pleasure of each other's company that much.
Not that much.
Well, I'm gonna ask you, I think you other folks have seen me a little bit, and I'm gonna ask you to have a very meaningful discussion, and I'm going to insist upon it, because that's what you're supposed to do, and I don't think I have to lecture either of both, of all three of you about your obligation, I want you to talk about it. I want you folks to pay particular attention to the Gore affidavit. I also want you to read that in the context of the limitations of my review of the ZBA order. And remember, the last paragraph of the ZBA order directed the building commissioner to take certain actions, which was not taken up to this point, and I'm gonna give you my editorial comment that it seems to be more than just a superficial response, I think it was a well-fought response. And the next thing is from, I don't know whether it's from the pleadings or general knowledge, but I understand that the hours of operation of the turbines, um, are scattered, that at one point, the town considered it in everyone's best interest to give a twelve-hour relief, and then all of a sudden it changed, I don't know where I heard it, I know, I might have heard on the radio coming up here, I also know it's in the pleadings. And having a select woman here right now might give everyone guidance of, of firming up exactly how long the turbine should be done, in consideration of the fact that there is at least some palpable injury to the folks, and because it seems like it was meaningful before, and, uh, it seems rather skittish to be changing the hours, so I'm gonna suggest that that be addressed as well. I'm asking the town to consider those hours of operation and giving it some kind of permanent schedule, and I want you to read very closely the Gore affidavit, and also make sure your clients understand what the limits of my review are. So, I'm asking you, first of all, to have that discussion. May I suggest something that you don't have to do? I would suggest if you, if you, if, if you want, and your parties want it, that each of you lawyers take one person representative of your clients, you and the Andersons, and you, one of the, and you, the select woman, and just have a face-to-face meeting as much as you can to discuss any possible solutions, to see whether or not it can happen. Spend a few minutes, fifteen, twenty minutes, whatever it takes, see if there's anything that can, can be worked out in terms of having a constructive dialogue. And then, when you're all finished, maybe the lawyers get together again, and, uh, come back and see where we go. I'm not gonna walk away from not making an order today, I want you to know that. But I, but I, I want every, both sides to understand that if you're able to meet the minds today and get an agreement with some of the suggestion of the narrowness of what you have in front of us today, not in the future, but today, you get an agreement, then you can live with it. If I order something, there's a potential for appeals. Mr. Duffy has not been shy about telling me that I was wrong. We'll have to wait and see, maybe not at all. And by the way, I have a much better batting average than even Dave Poffey during the road series. So, I think I'm right, I recognize that I might, you know, strike out on the bat once in a while. And counsel, it's very important to understand the emotions that are obvious that you start, that you continue to address this in the forum, really, uh, as a superior body of review of a municipal agency's decision. So, you people are content with doing it that way. Tricia, do we have the jury room available?
This afternoon.
Yes, now.
Uh, the third session, sir, is occupied by some folks from, um, the auditor's office, but the first and second, I think-
The jury rooms?
Yeah, I think that we should be able to get them in there.
You get one room?
Absolutely.
So, so you folks can go down there, and I'll just tell you the civil case and your verdicts and even our unitals, so, I'll see you in about half an hour, please, or a little bit longer.
Any to the audience?
And Mr. Falmouth.
Okay, collection number two thousand twelve, F five nine three, Walden Way LLC versus Carabiner. How many, does that identify your number?
Yes, you're going to be on.
Court, all rise, please. Once again, sessions have been proceeded.
Who wants to do the momentum for live lead on here?
The hearing has, uh, they agreed upon most. Your Honor, thank you for encouraging us to have a conversation, it was very fruitful, I think all parties have helped to feel that way. Uh, we would like to, uh, go on record today as saying that, uh, immediately the turbine operation will go back to the twelve hours on, twelve hours off, which is turbines operating from seven AM in the morning until seven PM in the evening. That's the timeframe they had operated under for about a year and a half until recently. Uh, we'd like to continue this matter, uh, until November twenty-first, if you have a space on your docket at that time.
Probably, I'm back to that in a second. And in the meantime, what are you, what are you doing?
In the meantime, I have promised to circulate a draft, a global settlement proposal to all parties and counsel, and, uh, the attorneys have agreed to talk about that settlement, and, uh, town council has indicated that on December eighteenth, the Board of Selectment will need an executive session, and he will review the terms of that possible global settlement.
So, assuming that discussions with your clients-
Not all of them, Your Honor.
Some.
Some of them are here. Yes.
And you as well?
We did have discussions there, um, we'd see the global settlement, and, uh, to settle all these matters, nuisance-based, there's only case which is on appeal, as well as this case.
But my question is, you've had discussions as a first-
We've had discussions-
And obviously, you wouldn't be standing in front of me unless it had been somewhat fruitful, is that fair?
That, that's correct.
And you have some, some, uh, bases to believe, particularly evidence side, or, you know, select woman.
The vacuum office. She participated in the negotiations, Your Honor, um, she'll be able to report to the Board of Select on her observations, and she had some, she had some comments and subjects, some suggestions that were helpful, so I very much appreciate her contribution this afternoon.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear it.
We will, um, uh, I, I will notify the building commissioner to start the proposal, let's end his affidavit, so that's gonna get underway. There's been some discussion of whether or not it's necessary, but we're gonna do it anyway. Um, and then we will look at a whole host of other issues, um, not all of which may be resolved on November eighteen, but I think-
Twenty-first. December eighteenth of the select.
Good, you said, what did I say?
Eighteenth of November.
Well, the eighteenth of November is when I need the select, then we're gonna-
Oh, you are, okay, the twenty-first is the day that you wanna come back?
Well, come back here, but we may not have-
We were both right.
Okay, we may not have everything agreed to there, but we'll tell you what we have done.
Good, that's what, everybody?
Yes.
Good, it's been a fruitful day, congratulations, and, uh, if the twenty-first is okay. It's Thursday?
It was a specific time of the command, it's the-
Two o'clock is always, uh, two o'clock is always open. I have a trial, I have a trial scheduled, I certainly will have one that day, so, um, if you all want to come in early, because we didn't have a trial, we'd be happy to see you then, so, we'll leave at two, and if the day is otherwise available, and you want to come in early, call the clerk's office, and I'll see you.
Your Honor, I just wanted to clarify that the global settlement is something that's hardly got egg months, so we, that's sort of separate from the actual-
I have months.
No, I understand, in terms of the preliminary injunction, that, that's being continued because some of the subjects that are to be discussed at the select, they go towards a remedy in the short term.
Let me just talk to you right now, the only thing we talked about today is a remedy in the short term.
Understood.
Okay, so we have looked at, and the second part of it is that, um, the completeness of it, I don't want satisfaction, uh, don't hold your breath, doesn't work that way. But getting the ball pushed forward to a lot of things that are going to be usually agreeable is, is probably what your short-term role is, but, and I'm happy to see you, and I don't know if you know what we're doing with the twenty-first, so everything's open-ended, but this is how we discuss it, there's some kind of, uh, movement, and there's some kind of general consideration, so I'm not going to press you to tell me anything about it, but continue to work, okay, you all.
Right here.
All rise, please. Would you stand the jury?
This honorable court is now in session, please make seated.
Your decision to audit Troy Mall on the hearing, November twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, Your Honor, Christopher James presiding, on simple document number two thousand and thirteen, two eighty-one, Town of Falmouth versus the Falmouth, no any more appeals. Counsel, please, I can't pass the record.
Alexander Watt, Neil and Elizabeth Anderson?
Absolutely, let me start it again. Good morning.
Good morning, Your Honor, Christopher Seney representing thirteen private parties in town.
Frank Duffy representing the town of Falmouth. And who wants to, tell me what's going on?
Uh, well, we were here two weeks ago, Your Honor, um, and we're here to give you a status report, the parties, uh, break it up. Mr. Watt, who represents the Andersons, and the town of Falmouth have been negotiating a settlement. Uh, we do not have a settlement to give you today. We feel we are close, but I can't tell the court any more than that. Uh, he was so optimistic that I actually brought along a document to be signed today, but it may not be, but we can see if there's, uh, some hurdles that we can overcome. Um, the Board of Selectmen, in the meantime, uh, over this period of time, has held two executive sessions to discuss terms and conditions of this, uh, proposed settlement, and Mr. Watt and I have been in contact with each other by email and by telephone over the period of time, the last two weeks, um, and we do, as I said, have a document that, um, represents certain elements that have been agreed upon and others that still have to be worked on. Um, with respect to Mr. Seney and his thirteen clients, um, Mr. Seney, um, did not provide us with, uh, a, any document to start negotiations until this morning, I got it this morning, but we have agreed, and we will agree in court, that we will continue to talk with him and his clients to see if we can work an agreement with them. They have much different interests than the, although there is a similarity of interests, their proposal, their, their settlement would include different interests than the, um, the Andersons, so it really requires a, a parallel track of negotiation.
Well, that was the global settlement, as you indicated two weeks ago. There was also an agreement that the turbines will be shut down, uh, for a consistent schedule, so there wasn't going to be, this pledge project was infertile. It was an agreement, it would be shut down.
No, no, I, I reported to the court that it would be shut down, I got back to Falmouth, the Falmouth, the Board of Selectmen have wanted to make that a condition of the settlement, um, so they-
Can I just, just to tee things up for everyone? I don't want to inhibit settlements, and I particularly don't want to inhibit a settlement that's close. But two weeks ago, there was a, an opportunity to, uh, argue for or against a reduction in hours, and, um, the court understood that that was to be done, and perhaps was a little bit too, um, conciliatory. Substantially, I issued it as an order, but it was understood that it would be done. So, if the way I saw it was, one, there would be an immediate deduction of hours, and two, the parties would agree, because they were talking, and the talks were fruitful, that they would attempt, because of the discussions we've drawn, preliminary had, to reach a final formal solution, which would be certainly everyone's best interest, but I saw it as two parts. So, I was a little bit disappointed to find out that, uh, the agreement that was given to the court somehow was found not to have been, um, a real agreement. I, I could have at the time, um, simply listened to both sides and done what I always do at the end of a motion session, which is to indicate the order of the court. Now, I appreciate the fact that, that one might very well implicate, um, uh, another proposal, but I, but I, but I take issue with the fact that it was ignored. I understood the agreement, I, you folks, you come in front of me all the time, and you know at the end of the day, if you agree to something, as, as consequential, by the way, as this issue-
It's very consequential.
As consequential as this issue, but also for the smaller ones, the cause to, to, to join, and you all know when you come in, that they, with the motion for preliminary injunction, that, uh, oftentimes, the bodies, uh, go outside in the back and say, this is what we agreed to, and, uh, it becomes an agreement, it's enforceable by the court, so, um, where are we in terms of the operational hours?
If I could address that, Your Honor, uh, for more than a year and a half, the town, uh, turned the turbines on only from seven AM in the morning to seven PM at night, and this was a great relief to my clients, the thirteen residents I represent. In October, the Board of Selectmen apparently took a decision that they, uh, wanted to get four more hours of operation a day, so increasing from twelve hours to sixteen, and there was some back and forth about which hours, but it wound up being five AM to nine PM. And so, since that time, my clients have indeed been significantly distressed, mostly between five AM-
Well, let me, let me just stop right there, um, I, I'm willing to hear from, I, I don't know where I'm going with this, so that, so I'm getting a picture of it, but, but, um, are you interested? Excuse me, uh, are you going to argue with the court not to impose any restrictions, either by agreement, by an order based upon your agreement, or leaving it to me to decide what the hours of operation should be in the short term, that is during the continued discussion to determine preliminary injunction, or?
Your Honor, one of the things that we did offer to the court, and I, it's in writing in a memorandum submitted to you-
What?
-two weeks ago.
Oh, okay, the original, okay, uh, the original with that, yes.
Yes, um, we suggested if the court were to issue an order, that we would ask that you consider ordering seven to seven.
But that's my, my point is, I thought we did that the last time. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying, Your Honor, and it's kind of embarrassing to stand here and, and, and discuss this particular issue, because I know what I said in court, but then when I got back, the Selectmen made it very clear that they had expected me to make it part of a settlement, not a voluntary, and, and in fact-
And I understand it, and I understand how there might be a misimpression of what we do here, just like I'm probably gonna be a complete novice if I ever had to go to a Selectman's meeting, so I appreciate the differences in procedure, but you understand that I'm probably not gonna bar off the reservation when I tell you that if the lawyers tell me they have an agreement, then I should be able to let each side take that to the bank, is that, is that kind of thing?
I understand.
Okay, okay, so now we're here, now, what would you like me to do? What, today, you would like to argue the number of hours, or do you want to have an agreement? That's what the number of hours, if there is an agreement, or then I will make it a part of an order, if it's not an agreement, then I will hear you, tell me how you'd like to go off and put that cap.
Your honor, on the Anderson standpoint, they'd like to proceed on continued argument on the motion for preliminary injunction. I don't think we're close enough on the settlement to really make that a legal part of this.
Yes, and you understand that I want you to make it happen, and I don't want to be the one that's going to stall it, order to deal with it, I want that clear. On the other hand, I just have one thing in front of me right now, and I'm happy to proceed with it. Last two weeks ago, I gave you the opportunity to talk among yourselves to find out what shutdown, if at all, ought to be allowed, and very frankly, I was persuaded by your agreement that that was at least a minimum, and if the parties agreed to that minimum shutdown, that I certainly was not going to disagree with it particularly, after I had the benefit of, was it Mr. Martin that was here?
She was here, I have the town manager, Mr. Suso, with me here today.
So, I had, I think he was, was he not here?
He was not here that last time.
Building Commissioner was here before. So I had, I thought I had all of the stakeholders here, and I thought the agreement was going to go forward, and I'm not going to keep repeating myself, Mr. Duffy, because I know that you're advocating a little bit of embarrassment, because you understood that the town, for some reason, did not quite understand what was going to happen in this courtroom, but I think all parties now understand it, all right, no, Mr. Sini, that you hold the mindset to argue in terms of what the parties should have in terms of the preliminary injunction?
Yes, your honor, I would ask the court to order seven to seven. Was the mitigation measure settled on by the Selectmen, and was in place for a year and a half, and it just changed back to greater hours? The settlement process...
The answer is, yes, you do want to argue.
I want to argue for seven to seven as an order from the court.
But you want to, okay, you want to argue something, and seven to seven is just your decision right now.
But I'd also like to do something, court, now that the settlement discussions, there was a lot of work in the last two weeks, and that that is very much on track, but like your honor, I believe that the turbine adjustment would be made as we headed down this path, and I do admit that I represented to you that I thought within two or three days I could get the counterproposal, but to sew together a consensus of thirteen parties was harder than I thought, and two of them were out of the country, but we did deliver that decision.
English and Scottish, Mr. Duffy, trying to get that consensus from five Selectmen.
I don't think any, either of us had an easy time.
And I'm not going to interfere with the easy time, and I'm taking your representations and the tone and tenor is indicating that everyone recognizes that this is a serious issue, that there is consequences and obligations of each side to the other, and benefits and consequences, rather, on each side, and I don't want to interfere with it. I think you folks are the best handled.
Do it.
And I think it's proceeding, you could hate them.
And I have no doubt of it, and I don't have a problem with the way things detoured a little bit, it was wrong, I hate to say it, but I understand that we didn't do it in bad faith, I think there was just a misunderstanding of what was to be done, so we're starting fresh. So the way you think I should approach this?
Well, your honor, so that there be no misunderstanding at my point, the court will order us to set the seven to seven hours, the town manager's behind me in this courtroom, the order will go out this afternoon.
And, Mr. Watt, who's got the safe of this?
Your honor, Anderson wants to pursue their original preliminary injunction, shutting down the turbine, I believe that's the only appropriate route.
So, how do, I've got you all through the documentation. Are going to accept the representations in writing as, unless there's a contrary view of this as being the testimony, otherwise be opted verbally? Is there any dispute of working on the papers, or is there an interest in putting people on the stand?
There would be an interest in putting people on the stand, your honor.
Okay, and who would those witnesses be?
Well, I would ask for Neil Anderson, and to the extent that I have to reply to some of the financial information, Mr. Suso.
Okay, and Mr. Anderson would testify as to what beyond what was previously given?
Very limited, there were representations made in Mr. Duffy's October thirty memorandum that Anderson somehow waited three years here to bring this nuisance complaint. He testified that the remedy that Mr. Gore had offered in his affidavit, that process actually happened before, but there was a noise complaint by the Andersons in two thousand and ten, shortly after the turbines went on, and Mr. Gore ordered this essentially same procedure to be placed of hiring acoustical engineers and determining what the noise levels were, et cetera.
Let me ask you this question, I'll ask Mr. Duffy to go on to it. When I asked you to go out and speak to each other, I indicated to you several points as I saw them from the pleadings, not the benefit of having testified, and one of which someplace was that, there was a reference that I made, that I did not believe that these claims going back three years were of any recent contrivance. Now, I hate to give my, make my comments to be a fine, but I felt that that's what the evidence that this has been given to me. Suggested, I suggested to you two points, several points rather, suggested that there was injury on both sides, there was severe consequences for everyone, and I also indicated that when I was trying to, to witness it, we didn't, unless you'll help, let me go back on again, but I did indicate that I didn't believe, and I'll be persuaded to make this into a finding if necessary, that there was no contrivance of the Andersons, of recent contrivances, the term "vot" that we use, that they had had a registration of their objections to the impact of the turbines at least for three years. Now, is that going to require any...
Of course, I'm not suggesting that they have not complained, I only need that comment for consideration as to the severity of the impact. It was just a comment, I'm not denying in any way that they have been complaining for a number of years, because they have.
And I know that they've taken, but they didn't just sit on their rights at any time.
No, they...
They were, I think, if anyone did not sit on their rights, it was the Andersons that had been on the surface in their opposition and done something good faith. I mean, that's probably not at the initial of the thing, is that fair?
I have no question about their integrity.
So what else would you like, I'm not going to stop Mr. Anderson from speaking to the court at all, I don't want you to know that, I'm just trying to find out what is it that he wants to give to me to consider for the opposition that the turbines should be shut down completely?
Just again, your honor, as the representation admitted that Andersons, the fact that two and a half years elapsed between the ringworm became operational, and Anderson filed a request for zoning enforcement, a soft run, zoning enforcement in the summer of two thousand and ten, and Mr. Anderson would also testify that Mr. Gore took some actions along the lines of what he has proposed now in his affidavit, and that those actions were insufficient, nothing came of it, so that's, that's, I could submit the papers, I had...
No, I'm happy, it sounds like it would be very brief, it would be very brief. I don't have a problem with it, I'm just trying to find out what it is so I keep my ears to it.
As to Mr. Suso, I believe I could actually just argue on the papers presented to the court, I don't really need...
Are you talking about the financial impact, wanting issues, of that nature?
Yes.
I'm happy to have you called, but he's signed on with his affidavit and provided very thorough, extensive documentation, I'm not missing anything, but it's what they have, and like every document, every document can be interpreted one way or the other, it doesn't mean that it's being done wrong, it just means that they're sometimes ambiguous or not that clear, so happy to have you, have him tell me what he said in his affidavit he can, or you can send the ID from the documents, the documents have to do with multiple documents that were given, and some of them more upon regulations and also the energy friendly agreements and things of that nature, so I think it's going to be more effective if you go to the original source of the argument as opposed to what the town source says it says, if I'm right, so.
Yes.
And would you have any evidence to talk to the Andersons?
Well, I do not bring the building commissioner with me, your honor, I frankly, I personally do not know what transpired between them a couple of years ago, but...
But I think the narrow issue is going to be impact and a little bit of history on it, that is not far with ready recorded in his affidavit and other pleadings.
Well, his affidavits are pretty comprehensive, however.
Sometimes people like to just speak up.
I understand.
So I'm going to let him speak in a moment, I just want to find the narrow issues, so there's some clarity there. Can you stand up, please? James, paying attention to me?
I'm trying.
I'm going to let you speak, I'm having sworn in in a moment, so I'm just trying to make sure that the information that you give me is not conclusive of what you've already given in your affidavits or otherwise, and I appreciate the fact that you want to be heard, and I think you also feel that you're not heard so much, I did not give you that opportunity, but I want it to be done constructively to my benefit, I want to order it, and I want to give every side an opportunity, opportunity to contradict or explain or support anything that you say, all right?
Thank you.
Are there any other documents that you're going to provide me?
Just to understand the scope of what's going on here, I believe your honest initial interim decision on has made a ruling on a likely going success.
Right.
To that extent, if that ruling stands, I don't intend to...
Do you think I'm in the habit of rehearsing myself?
No, your honor, it's just that the town submitted additional rebuttal evidence on that.
And I think I addressed it in the last hearing, I indicated, Mr. Duffy, that I appreciate the fact that they think I misinterpreted the statutory immunity defense, and I said that's fine, I appreciate the fact that I may be wrong on it, I don't believe I am, I said, but I'm not going to, it's not going to be resurrected, it's not going to be resurrected, and I appreciate the fact that there's a difference in everything here, it's done all the time, in fact, a lot of people in Massachusetts think that United States Supreme Court gets things uniformly wrong, so it's not going to be, it's not an unreasonable question to say that people leave some, the construction maintenance and operation of the turbines are going, it's going to be fuel over CVA, and therefore, I appreciate that, it's one of the limited scopes of review that the court has, to determine if it's legally untenable or not, and it says on behalf of the town that the CVA got it wrong as a matter of law. I say as a matter of law it didn't, and he doesn't have to be agreeing with me at this point, and there's always a potential for it to be reversed, but that's not going to affect this case, this is not going to, we're not holding back, it's not...
And we said all we're going to say, and that's such a crime.
Well done, well said. What else do we have to do before we start? Anything? Mr. Anderson, please, square your position.
Please, right then, you solemnly swear with the evidence, the testimony you should give to the court, the man in our hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, say, help me up.
Help me up.
Thank you.
Good morning, could you state your name for the record?
Neil Anderson.
Mr. Anderson, good morning, Mr. Anderson.
Good morning.
May I approach your honor?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson, I just handed you a three-page document to the court, courtesy copy.
Well, I'll tell you what to do. Is this going to be a hearing exhibit, is this something that's already been...
It has not been presented.
Okay, you showed it to counsel before this hearing.
I have not.
I would like everyone...
I have not seen it.
Okay, I would like everyone to share the documents, if you know the same method, you can go through the process, and I'll describe what the document is, and then move it into evidence, where I can say hearing exhibit, it's admitted without objection or on detention objection, and this courtesy copy for me is what I have.
This will be the only exhibit that I'll be offering.
Let me look at it while you're doing this.
Do you recognize that document, Mr. Anderson?
What is the first page of that document?
Conventional complaint form to the Thalmud Building Commissioner acting as the zoning enforcement administrator, complaining of excessive loud, louder than usual noises, basically nuisance complaints, asking for some type of action.
Okay, and did you receive a response at all from the building inspector?
Page two, June four, two thousand and ten, is a response from Mr. Gore outlining what the town is intending to do, how they're going to help with the situation at my house, basically they're going to order some acoustical noise tests, and depending on what the noise tests, the results of the noise test, possibly take some type of remedial action.
Okay, so, is there any objection to the notion that this is a good...
No, there are.
I'd like a copy of the document from the house, would you allow, take the document and house it into our court?
All right, Mr. Anderson, if you know, did Mr. Gore do anything in this domain pursuant to this response letter?
The noise tests were conducted in the summer of two thousand and eleven, I believe, I might be wrong, but it was in the summertime. To make a long story short, they were proved to be inaccurate, so the DEP...
Hold on a second, I'll go through the background. First question was whether or not Mr. Gore did what he said he would do, that's the first question. Can you tell me that it was done in the summer of twenty one, except that?
Yes.
So, leave it alone for a second, he is asking questions in a direct way, so what you're up to?
So, tests were conducted?
Yes.
And what were the results of those tests, if you know?
They were done incorrectly, they were ordered to be done in.
Who determined that they were done exactly?
The Massachusetts Department of provided mental protection.
Okay, and did the DEP subsequently do it?
The DEP came back and did nighttime testing, yes.
Okay. Has Mr. Gore ordered any update under the nuisance from the time they erected to now, to your knowledge?
No.
Did he ever report back to you on the results of this test? The test we took? The test that was conducted by... The test that was conducted by DEP, by the town, to itself?
The town, not him directly, but they were made known to me to vote as well.
No further questions, Your Honor. Anyone counsel Mr. Duffy personally?
No question.
Please, don't go. I don't have a...
Just a little bit.
We have a volley going back and forth, the way he gets to ask questions, and...
I'm not asking you how I feel. You just can't stay in that house.
I'll hear you, but I'll do sum up exactly what your objections are. Can you give it, I need to tell you about a lot of these documents, some of which were found convincing by the ZDA, and I appreciate the impact that you're playing, and I'm happy to give you, I want to summarize. Well, you can tell me, if you need to use documents, though, I had just a...
These are all other complaints.
Well, why don't you just tell me exactly, as you said, you wanted to tell me how do you feel, how do you feel about...
I just had this thing going off in my ear. It was still ringing in my ears, it just popped. I had no business, I used to be a home builder. That's gone. Can't focus, can't concentrate, having accidents. Even worse for her. We have two rooms in our house that we hide in in the daytime when we don't leave. We have a walkout basement where my office is. We have a beautiful house, Your Honor, we don't want to leave. But we have to, because we cannot stand that turbine anymore. So two weeks ago, we were in the same position. We were expecting somebody to leave two weeks ago. I don't know if you've noticed, these past two weeks have been pretty windy. Every single day, leave the house, can't work, can't focus on anything, can't do business. I gave the job just a month and a half ago, so I couldn't remember anything, I couldn't commit to the job. So, the town has made an offer, I don't know if I can...
And that's just not true, only because it's something that you don't want to affect the property?
Well, it's basically a call from the manager saying that we're kicked off the team. But we need somebody, seven to seven, we complain, I do seven to seven, we're just in that funnel with that turbine, the barely winds, you get in that wake, and it just starts pounding on you, pounding on your surf. So...
Is your problem different? I know they feel different, but you want to tell me why you think it might be different than the other thirty-two names?
The property and exposure, they both play a very big role in this.
So, Mr. Anderson, the request that you want, if you were to ask me to shut it down completely, and you persuaded me that I should, there is a, there will be a very strong argument that I was wrong to do so. So even if you and I agree that it should be shut down, you're not there yet, by the way, I don't want the town to think I'm making any judgments yet, but even if I did, and I was found to be wrong, both of us could be wrong about it, and then this case has a different track on it, and I think this is what, there's been references to it, I don't know the details, or should I, but it sounds like there are damage claims for the immunition and value of your property, besides the nuisance claim for your use of enjoyment. There's actually a claim someplace, I saw a reference, for constructive, can you like the record of that?
Not in this case, but in another case.
Okay. So at the end of the day, at the end of the day, sometimes it's a long day, but sometimes if the parties get together again, it can be a short day, if candy and agreement is what that value is, and if it eliminated a hundred percent of the value of your property, then there's a notion of due process of law that requires the town or the state to pay for that loss. That's a real number. And it seems to me, and again, I take no position, you've told me how you feel, and you told me how you view the evidence, and I'm sure the town has a contrary view of it, but it seems to me that at least at the outset, at least at the outset, the party should be able to agree to see what that value is, what the harm is, and what's it to do, and what's the dollar value. At the end of the day, the court will never give you anything more, on that case, than money. It's not gonna give you back help, but the term mitigation suggests that the pain or any damage that you suffer is provable. Again, I'm not suggesting that you're exaggerating anything to make it, but the other side of the argument always has your right to be able to challenge it, it can be skeptical. So that's how we work on it. But it seems to me that, again, I'm not dismissive of the fact that this is a home that you want to stay in, but it also strikes me that if it becomes intolerable, there is a value for the loss that you have, and regardless of what I might do, I'm not the final word on it, and what I'm projecting for you would be further contest in the future. And I would assume, I would assume that when the building commissioner was directed to make that foundational's litigation, the town or Falmouth would be very open to bail compensation for any injury if it can't be mediated. Now, we have thirteen other neighbors of yours, ones that you say don't have the same departmental, and arguably, less impact. And sometimes, the sound engineers can come up with mitigation that provides for minimal expense to address the sound issues or the pressure issues, and they'll be different than you. But it strikes me that everybody here, everybody in this room, let's say, on the other side of the aisle, should be able to find out exactly what the, what the dollar cost, in some estimate, some fair estimate, the dollar cost, the harm is to office. And I would hope, I would hope that that's being pursued by the town. I would hope that that's being pursued by the town. And that's something that ought to be considered, and it is being considered. If it is being considered, then that should weigh into balance somehow, somehow. But it's not, I don't want to get into the details of any negotiations that they're proper, but I think it's something that is contemplated by the mitigation law. I think it's contemplated, it may not be expressed, but I think it's contemplated. And I would expect that the town, with water's obligations, will be aggressive to the fourth right and bail it. On the other hand, bear in mind that there are documents that have been given to me, have been affidavits to them, given to me, that indicate that the town will be looking at some very significant financial consequences if I were to shut it down. And I appreciate that council is going to direct me today to why the claims might be exaggerated or unfounded. Facially, I want to tell everybody, they're not unfounded. Some of the provisions, I will tell you, are a little bit ambiguous. What the general thrust is, that there are agreements between other third parties, that could very well trigger substantial financial consequences for the town, that's something that I have to consider, I want you to know that. And I want you to know I have to consider it, it's the other side of the dangerous coin. But I don't believe that you have recently contrived anything. I don't believe that you are a person who is fabricating in any way the impact that these turbines have had upon you. I don't believe that anyone in this room would be here if there wasn't some actual back controversy ongoing. So avoid giving stuff with deciding what to do in the short term. But I would strongly suggest that if your life is suffering physically, and you are suffering physically, that the, that you can entertain the value of this, because I can't fix your health, going to another location might, how you get to that other location may be impossible unless the town down steps up and comes to some kind of agreement. And the fairing, I might have, the fairing as to what the expenses are, the financial expenses that you'll make. I'm certain also that there are emotional expenses that you'll be suffering and feeling if you had to leave your home, I'm certain of that. However, I just need to tell you, I'm sure council will confirm for you, you can't give a dollar value for that, can't give a dollar value for that from any court or any jury, I just need you to know that, because it might be able to facilitate, you know, fixing this whole problem. So is there anything else you want to tell me?
Yes. First of all, there is no mitigation for the low-impresse sound.
For the what?
The low-impresse sound that's impacting us, you know, the low frequency...
Right.
There's no mitigation, I would have done it for, I'm a builder, I tried it in another neighbor's house, it doesn't work. So it's either rego or the turbine goes. We realized that three years ago. Temporarily, how about letting us enjoy maybe our last holiday in our home in peace? That'd be too much to ask, we can shut them off now until beginning of January.
What would you do in January?
Well, we'll go back to twelve, twelve.
Well...
Twelve on, twelve off.
I don't like being where I am right now.
You don't think me doing it, Your Honor?
No, I want to tell you why. I mean, that's it. I don't live in Congress, I have nothing to do with this. I have a very political scope, and that's why I wanted to have our council, there are a lot of councils, and people are being together to try to figure out what's going on. So I have a, I have the unusual situation that Mr. Duffy feels his pain every time I bring this up. But I've been sitting here for a long number of years, constantly getting decisions by the local towns and municipalities, the station commissions, the store commissions are selecting them on it, the ZDA's, a lot of ZDA work. And I'm always told, always told by town council, to make sure that I respect my deferential role to simply look at the pointing of the agency's decision, in this case, the ZDA, it could be someone else, conservation or whatever, and not to second guess them, so long as it's not legally untenable, which means not unlawful, and that it's not capricious or arbitrary, which means that there's some substantial evidence on the record that provides for their conclusions, even if I disagree with them. So I'm not being asked to agree or disagree with the level of sound impact that one knew, or the pressure that's been on ticket, I'm not doing that, I don't know how to do it to be frank with you. I look at it, see whether or not, whether or not the hearing was banned to you or to others, and whether or not I have any reason to overturn it. I've decided at first, since it's very likely that the ZDA, Zone Board gave very, very careful, thoughtful consideration of the issues that you raised in your question enforcement order, that the conclusions that they reached, what I have right now is entering an order that is not going to hurt either side too much. And when I say I'd rather not be doing it, it means that I really don't know, I really don't know exactly how to address the issue on a very deeply personal level that you possess it. And that's why I was hoping the town would be able to meet with you and other affected parties and try to find their own little one. I'm going to find something of my answer, I'm gonna tell you that, I'm happy to do it, I'm not sure of my disqualitability, I'm just saying that on the last stop on this train line, and I think it was more appropriate for the town, by and through its agencies, with council, with the taxpayers, and with the various points of views, to resolve it like it deserves, and to resolve other disputes. So thank you for your help, just to put a face on the problem, just to give you and your wife a deep face of this problem, and I'll do the best I can, all right?
So I'm asking, is there anything like that? Thank you.
Thank you. Who are the other witnesses? Paul Julian Susso.
If you solemnly swear with the testimony you should give to the court in the manner known in the hearing shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you out?
Yes.
Thank you, may be seen.
Good morning, sir. Council, take your seat.
Just identify yourself with the records, sir. Can you identify yourself?
Yes, I'm Julian Susso, Falmouth Town Manager.
Is it fair to say you submitted an affidavit in this case? Do you recall submitting an affidavit in this case?
Yes, sir, I did. No, sir.
If I may, can I share on that with you? Okay. Without specific reference to any paragraph, is it fair to say that Lynn one was funded through the issuance of bonds?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Okay. What do you base that understanding on?
Well, I've been town manager for two... Well, I've been town manager for two years. I was not here when wind one was purchased. So that's my review of the records, sir.
Okay. Do you know when -- or what are the bonds that were issued with respect to wind one?
Municipal general obligation bonds.
Okay. And how many were there?
I don't have that information.
Okay. Is it contained in your affidavit there?
I'm not certain whether maybe an appendix, part of the appendix.
Did you submit that affidavit in respect to this case?
Yes, sir. I think I just indicated that I did.
Did you review it before you signed it?
Yes, I did.
Did you review the exhibits before you signed it?
In general, yes. Not as to detail and every item, but I'm generally familiar with that. Yes, sir.
Are the exhibits that are attached here in the affidavit true and correct?
Yes.
I may. Your Honor, I didn't bring another copy of the affidavit. There's one on file.
I have it in progress.
Okay. I'm free to exhibit A1 and A2 and ask you what those exhibits are.
I have copies over here. May I get them?
Yes, please.
Can I identify what exhibits A1 and A2 were?
Exhibits A1 and A2 are financial documents presented, prepared and presented by the town's financial advisors for Southwest.
For what Southwest?
First Southwest, the town's financial advisors in this matter.
Okay. And what do those exhibits sell here?
Information on costs relative to the borrowing, debt service schedule essentially, over a number of years, the life of the bond.
Okay. Is it fair to say that sets forth certain specific dates for payments?
There are payment dates on here, yes, sir.
And there are certain dates where there are payments of interest and there are payments of principal interest. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
So can you tell the court when the next payment is due on these bonds? On either of the bonds?
I have not reviewed that in this detail and that detail, sir, nor do I personally undertake those payments. I do have colleagues on my staff that do that work, working with First Southwest. We could get you that answer, but I don't have it here. My finger's up.
Okay. You cannot tell by looking at the exhibits?
I'm not comfortable reviewing this exhibit, but I could make that effort if the court would like me to go through that exercise. I think for now.
Let's -- can you estimate the traditional payment schedules that you have, the divestments, I assume there's some payment time, whether it's monthly, quarterly, yearly, is that fair? There is a projected schedule of payments for every application in town. That's right?
There is, Your Honor, and you indicate there are many beyond just the one in front of me.
Well, the one in front of you, is it typically a quarterly one? Is it a -- can you tell me that much?
I'll be happy to review it and take a look, Your Honor. I don't know off the top of my head.
Is it something that's be found in the document itself? What is a typical payment date? And I told you I didn't know very much about town government. It's not my ignorance.
Understood, sir.
So is it typically a monthly or?
It is typically less frequently during the year, quarterly or semiannually. Could be annually, but it can vary by bond and the method of issuance and any adjustments that the financial advisor may have made.
Is it fair to say that it would be no more than annual?
In some circumstances, it's not a -- I wouldn't be comfortable drawing a broad conclusion for the matter right in front of me. But that information is available.
So at some point in the future, you have a day installed, is that fair?
Absolutely, Your Honor. That is underway now.
We'll leave that alone.
Mr. Sussow, to your knowledge, do exhibit A and exhibit B set forth for this court what the schedule of payments is on the bonds?
Schedules A1 and I believe you mean A1, exhibits A1 and A2.
Correct, yes.
To the best of my knowledge, give that general information. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Do you know what the energy receipts for appropriation account is?
Do I understand what that account is?
Do you know what that account is?
It was established prior to my arrival as town manager.
Okay. And do you know what the purpose of that account was?
Although I was not here at the time, I believe it was set up to be a holding account for certain receipts from one or both wind turbines. The details of that exactly, I'm not familiar with.
Okay. I could direct you to paragraph 16 of your affidavit. Can you read that for the court, please?
I can read it.
May I just review it, Your Honor?
My copy. Is it fair to say that in article and paragraph 16, you say that there's $415,373 in that account, energy receipt for appropriation?
Yes, sir. Reserve for appropriation, correct.
Do you know where that can be appropriated to?
The exact purposes of the spending of that account go back to the original creation and approval by town meeting. I don't have that in front of me, but in general, I believe they're limited to wind turbine-related matters.
Could it be used to appropriate funds for the payment of electricity for the town?
I don't know the answer to that.
I believe also paragraph 16, you make reference to certified free cash.
I don't make that reference in paragraph 16, sir.
Do you know whether the town has certified free cash at this point?
Following the recent town meeting, in as part of my affidavit, there was a representation of the amount of certified free cash, which has been reduced by over half as a result of town meeting action last week.
Okay. And certified, could you explain what certified free cash is?
Those are funds that the state verifies are available to the town for appropriation by town meeting for legitimate expenditures.
Okay. And do you know, are there currently funds in certified free cash?
Yes, considerably reduced beyond what my affidavit indicated initially, yes.
Okay. Do you know approximately how much is remaining in certified free cash?
My understanding is it's well under $2 million currently. I don't have that exact figure, sir.
What does that mean? $2 million in cash that you can expend any way you want subject to town meeting or portal? What does it mean?
Generally, Your Honor, that is indeed what it means as long as it's appropriated by town meeting pursuant to bylaw statute for lawful purpose. Yes, sir.
Mr. Waddes, is the proposition that the town use that to offset any kind of claims by the bondholders or bondholders?
It would be my argument that that could be used on an interim basis, certainly, to affirm the tendency of a preliminary injunction in terms of what the devastating harm would be to the town if this court orders a preliminary injunction.
What you're saying is that if Mr. Duffy said, no matter what the court does, we're not going to put the town out of existence. I think he also wanted to say the town, they have the financial obligation in. I think that's the position. So there's $2 million in cash right now. As you're saying, that if it was shut down, the lights were shut down, that you'd be getting immediate bond to the town other than the loss of some of the monies that would not be available for that whole time, for the kind of condition. What about the loss of $2 million in terms of the value of it?
Well, Your Honor, as I will argue, based on exhibits A and B, is that if I'm not talking about $2 million that the town is going to have to have spent.
What happens if unlikely, as I seen to you, that there's immediate default and payment is taken? I think that's one of the premises of their right, and I don't know if it's a strong one.
I understand, Your Honor, and I will get to that, but I don't believe there is not the immediate default.
Let's work on the assumption that there, again, work on the assumption that it would happen. If it did happen, would it be able to say the town would immediately go and be able to survive with this reserve account, this recapture?
But that excess is a promise that it could happen, that the default would.
Well, that's what the government --
I agree.
That's what I'm saying. Now, what we're having here is we're having an honest discussion and dispute over the consequences will be. And as I said, don't know, but need to worry. But if it did happen, I think their position, that $2 million is of significant sort. And it would have some substantial impact, I think that's readily apparent, if he had to spend the $2 million cash reserve to get themselves out of the problem of the default of any of the bonding abilities or otherwise. There's a couple of otherwise that they're going to present. Their view that that's a substantial impact upon the town. I think that's where everybody's going with it. I think they're right. It is a substantial impact. It doesn't mean that it's not one that he has to assume. And so I think it's credible that it is a substantial impact. If it happens, I believe, and I appreciate the fact that you don't want to concede that point as well.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mr. Sussow, provided that the payments are made on these bonds with respect to wind one, on the dates when due and the amounts as shown, will the town be in danger of default of those bonds?
To the best of my knowledge, with regard to wind one alone, as long as payments are made timely within all the agreements made, we are in good shape. We do have a problem with renewable energy credits, however, which are coming up very quickly.
Just specifically with respect to these bonds that were issued, general obligation bonds, as long as the payments are made, we'll not be in default of those. Is that clear?
Within that narrow window, that's correct, sir.
Do you know, Mr. Sussow? Just got the affidavit back. I want to turn to wind two now, just for a moment. Could you explain to the court generally how wind two, the purchase price, was acquired, just in general?
My review of the records, again, I was not present at that time, is that wind two was acquired primarily, there were some additional costs, but primarily through the receipt of a grant slash loan as ultimately a federal economic stimulus money passed through the Commonwealth to the town of Falmouth, which has a number of stipulations, performance-related requirements and stipulations to which the town is obligated.
Is this only as to wind two?
Yes, Your Honor.
Mr. Sussow, I may approach, and Your Honor, I've given a copy of this letter to counsel. Mr. Sussow, were you a town manager on March 28, 2013?
Yes, sir.
As town manager, would you be privy to correspondence given to the board of selectmen or sent to a particular member of the board of selectmen?
Generally speaking, yes, sir.
Do you recognize the letter that I've just provided you?
I believe I've seen this letter before. Yes, sir.
Okay. Your Honor, I would offer that into evidence.
Will you judge?
No.
Let's hear it into the number two.
Excuse me. Exhibit number two, this is so much.
Mr. Sussow, is it fair to say that this is a letter from the United States Environmental Protection Agency to Mr. Kevin Murphy, who was a board of selectman member?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Does that letter describe the general financing structure for wind two?
In general terms only, yes.
Okay. And it's fair to say that this, as you said, came from, the money came from the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, granted, funds granted to the Department of Environmental Protection, who then made subgrants to the states. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe you mean through the EPA, subgrants to the states. Correct.
Right. From the EPA to the states.
Yes, sir.
And in this particular case, the EPA gave the money to this Clean Water State Revolving Trust. Does that get --
Yes, sir. That's my general understanding.
Okay. It's the trust that then granted the money to the town. Is that correct?
Without reviewing that document, I could not be sure, but they certainly had a rule.
Okay. Have you had a chance to review this letter and read it?
Yes, sir.
Do you believe that the Environmental Protection Agency in any way will be seeking recruitment of these funds if wind two were to go offline?
I am concerned about the state agency, less concerned about the federal.
Okay. In fact, doesn't this letter say that the EPA says everything's been complied with, you're going on a calendar?
Well, this letter says that it's up to the state.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just referring you back to your affidavit now. Exhibit B one. Do you recognize that document?
It predates my tenure as town manager, but I recall reviewing it briefly, yes, sir.
Isn't it fair to say that the, that's a loan agreement with the Water Abatement Trust with the town?
In general, it appeared to be, yes, sir.
All right. I, I believe if you turn to schedule C of that agreement, that's schedule C to the exhibit D one.
All I see, sir, is the schedule B on this particular exhibit, any of B. I see a schedule C.
Do you recognize that in the schedule C?
Oh, I see a very tiny lettering there. I overlooked the schedule C.
It's the last document of the page of that exhibit, is that correct?
Yes.
And I believe you made a representation that that's a true and correct copy of the Water Abatement Trust agreement, um, as it stands?
Yes, sir, I can answer that.
I may show you the document. And ask if you recognize that document.
I don't, I don't specifically recall seeing this document, uh, earlier, although I may have, sir. There's so many related to this matter.
Who is Carol Martin, do you know?
I believe Carol Martin at one time was, uh, town treasurer in Falmouth. That's not been the case during my tenure.
Who is the treasurer now?
Susan Rickley.
In preparing your affidavit, where did you get a copy of the Water Abatement Trust document?
That information was provided from, uh, records in the finance department as well as in the town manager's office. And were assembled with the assistance of the, uh, finance director and assistant town manager. Your Honor, I just move this into evidence.
Is there any objection?
No objection, Your Honor.
What does this want to do with me? I'm uncertain as to whether or not this is. I appreciate the fact that it's connected to the case, it's very relevant, connected to the relevant, has any, you know, arguments on your judgment.
Would this kind of be a default under the trust document?
Okay. Now, translate this part. What does this say in your mind?
Well, basically, this is a letter, uh, from the Water Pollution Abatement Trust to the town, providing a amended schedule C. And specifically, it's amended by changing the very last paragraph footnote at the bottom of the schedule C.
Can I read it in small print? This project qualifies, said it.
Yes.
For principal forgiveness in the amount of pursuant inherent without any investment care, so on, there's era requirements, as stated, schedule B, the loan agreement, that principal forgiveness shall occur upon completion of the project, according to the project regulatory term agreement. So what, what are you saying that says?
If you compare that to the schedule C that was provided in exhibit, if, the copy provided to the court, that footnote says it may qualify for, uh, principal forgiveness. Here, the Water Abatement Trust says it does qualify for loan forgiveness, uh, provided all the, uh, regulatory conditions are met, as set forth in schedule B.
Now, connect the dots for me.
Well, we'll get to schedule, we're going to get to schedule B now to determine whether, uh, they met all those requirements under schedule B. Or the town has met all of them.
And what is the proposition?
My proposition is that they have, in fact, made, uh, they have marked fully with that.
So schedule B, as noted by the footnote, indicates that it will be called forgiveness of the loan. Regardless of the continuous operation, is that true, sir?
Correct, Your Honor. Again, referring you to exhibit E one, I believe, which is the Water Abatement Trust, uh, loan agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's fair to say that you submitted, um, and, well, there's an exhibit B attached to that loan agreement, is there not? And it's, I think I suffocated it out for you there.
There's a schedule B entitled, what is that entitled?
Additional Covenants and Conditions. The exhibit piece, the schedule B says that?
I'm sorry, sir.
I'm sorry. Exhibit D two.
I'm sorry, sir, your question about this exhibit was?
What's that entitled?
Department of Environmental Protection, Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program Project Regulatory Agreement.
Okay. I believe you stated in your affidavit that, uh, the town had to maintain this project as an energy-efficient project?
I think that's one of the general comments that I made, sir, yes.
And do I identify where in the agreement that is stated?
I don't recall seeing that it was in this agreement, sir.
Do you recall where that condition is?
We've had, uh, since, since I arrived as town manager, I've had multiple meetings with state officials that are overseeing, uh, and monitoring the town's operations, the wind turbines, uh, under the auspices we're talking about today. And they have made it clear to me, uh, both verbally and in writing, that, uh, they take very seriously the town's responsibility to operate these turbines, uh, in a manner consistent with the intent, uh, which is energy-saving, uh, the intent of the era funds, the intent of the state's mission, uh, regarding energy savings, and that they put us on notice to continue to alert them anytime we have a change in the operating hours of the turbines.
Okay. So when they said it, said this to you, did they point you to a specific provision in the loan agreement that requires you to maintain, requires the town to maintain the project as an energy-efficient project?
They did not point to a specific line in any agreement. They just made it quite emphatic that is the case and that is their responsibility.
Okay. Is it fair to say that, um, the departments that you spoke to at the state level are departments of the executive department of the state under the governor?
Uh, I would think all departments in the state general would be, uh, part of that category.
Okay. Is it fair to say that the governor certainly has a green energy policy?
Given areas that are remote.
Okay. Do you identify, other than speaking to state officials, any provision in the loan agreement, uh, with the Water Abatement Trust that requires the project to be, let's write that down, other than speaking to town officials, have you identified any provision in the Water Abatement Trust loan agreement that requires the project to be maintained as a energy-efficient project?
I did not review this agreement in that level of detail, Counselor. We have, again, received, um, in multiple meetings, uh, it's been stated.
You already said that. The answer is.
We did receive correspondence, Your Honor, in addition.
Question is whether or not anything in the loan agreement is supportive of a proposition indicated by the owner of it. Is that, is that a fair interpretation?
Yes, but I've not reviewed it, so I'm not able to comment directly on that.
You're trying to see something in it that the owner truly wants, but you also indicated discussions about correspondence written in otherwise.
Yes, yes, Your Honor.
Okay. I want to just turn to the question of the renewable energy certificates. Am I using that term correctly? Is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Could you explain just to the court briefly what a renewable energy certificate is?
Well, in general, I don't pretend to be an expert in any of that, and again, it predates my tenure, but my understanding is that the, uh, town worked with the Mass Clean Energy Center and, uh, in issuing what are known as renewable energy certificates and advanced funds to the town of Falmouth, which have been expended, um, on the wind turbines. And that the payments on these certificates become due beginning in fiscal year 15. And in fact, uh, we are preparing that budget now as I speak, and, uh, we are involved in that process.
Okay. Is it fair to say there are two agreements for renewable energy certificates?
I believe there are. I'm not fully aware of all those details, but I believe there are, so to speak.
Okay. I'm going to show you your affidavit. Exhibit B. And just ask if you recognize that document.
This is, uh, one of the agreements for the purchase and sale of the RECs there called. Could you just read paragraph 2.2 of that agreement? Do you want the entirety of the paragraph read, sir? 2.2. "Transfers subject to the terms and conditions of this agreement. Seller hereby agrees to transfer or have transferred to the buyer's LSE account or such other account as buyer may designate in writing at least 30 days prior to the commencement of each rec trading period. Free and clear of all claims, liens, security interests, and encumbrances of every kind, nature, and description. The buyer hereby agrees to purchase, acquire, and receive assignment from seller all the seller's right, title, and interest in all of the RECs slash GIS certificates produced by the wind generation facility during the previous rec trading period. In accordance with the acceptance procedures of the applicable NEGIS, the buyer must acknowledge the seller's transfer of RECs slash GIS certificates to its LSE account."
So I have this part of it. Can you tell me what part of it you want me to look at?
And is that a true and correct part of the?
Counsel, I don't need the medium of a witness to be able to.
Thank you, Your Honor.
So just tell me, what are my intentions about the evidence?
Part of the particular provision, if the power is not produced because of unscheduled outages or other reasons.
You don't have the control of the seller.
Seller shall not be liable for any damages to the initiative out of REC's produced. That's a provision of that contract.
Understood.
Have you had any discussions with Cape and Vineyard?
Not directly. I have not, no, sir.
Are those REC's currently being transferred to Cape and Vineyard? I mean, Cape and Vineyard?
When you say transferred, I'm unclear what you mean, sir.
Well, I, I don't understand the exact process, but is it fair to say that a certain amount of energy is produced and then there are certificates that are then transferred to Cape and Vineyard?
That's my general understanding, that the payments, again, become due for the first time in FY15, beginning in July 1st, of course.
What payment is that? This is what I want to say.
Well, Your Honor, in return for these certificates, which generated revenue to the town and advanced and assisted in the, uh, acquisition and, and, and direction of the two turbines, um, the town has to repay this obligation.
By money or by these certificates?
By money, sir.
By actual cash?
Yes, sir.
Regardless of any of the, uh, production of power?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding, Your Honor.
And those who want, help me out, what is it that that does? In other words, what, where do you see the reduction in the production of power as bearing upon, uh, obligation of the town? Hey, fiscal year 15 for these certificates?
Your Honor, just, I, I am done probably asking questions because we can rely on.
Tell me what it is. Tell me what it is that's obligated.
No, I understand. Um, under the Cape and Vineyard provision.
Right.
There's clearly a, a savings clause, as it were, that if they're really shut down of the turbines.
2.2, okay, I have it.
That it would, uh, they wouldn't be responsible for any damages.
Okay. What does that mean?
That means if this, or if you're in a, uh.
I'd be as bad as bad weather.
I'm sorry?
I'd be as bad as bad weather. Because the shortage is due to weather and other unforeseen things. If that's bad, subject to interpretation, but then what's next?
Uh, there is a second agreement with respect to wind turbines, uh, which I believe Mr. Suso just made reference. And those certificates, and I don't believe under the agreements, you can read the agreements, but, uh, under the agreements, cash payments are to be made. My understanding that money was paid upfront.
It was.
It's like a back-ending agreement.
If that's bad.
And there have to be these renewable energy certificates transferred.
Like cash.
Which can then be sold on the secondary market, uh, or whatever. The second one, the CEC, um, for, with respect. The second one, the CEC, with respect to wind two, the agreement's attached as the affidavit, but those certificates are not deliverable until January of 2015. So there's no, there's no threatened reach of that within the context of...
So whatever should happen, if for us or no, it was happened until January 2015, is that your proposition?
Yes. And I'll just make the final argument on that, and I'll refer you to that CEC agreement.
Which one is this, though? Exhibit B, being what?
And that is Exhibit C, which is actually the Massachusetts Technology Park Corporation, which I understand is now known as CEC. So that's that Exhibit C. And I direct you to paragraph six. Exhibit C. Exhibit B is the Cape and Vineyard.
Exhibit C is the renewable energy, it's between the town and the Massachusetts, or what page?
Let's see, section 6.4, page 22.
All right. And what, page 22, six, so for what?
6.4, force majeure. Again, they're going to be a force majeure. Under that paragraph, not liable to the other for any failure or delay in rendering performance, arising out of causes beyond its reasonable control and without its lawful advantages. And it goes on to say...
The acts of God and the acts of judges.
It goes on to say that during a period of force majeure...
I understand that, I understand that that and the other position.
And there will be an extension of time.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. Yes, I'd like to ask, Mr. Sousa, a few questions, Your Honor. Thank you. So I'm referring now to the affidavit that you filed with this court. Do you have a copy of it?
No, sir, I don't.
Would you? I didn't bring it.
What are you looking for?
His affidavit.
I have it in the, well, it's black and it's silk.
Perhaps we can use the copy of Mr....
That's fine.
Mr. Watt provided. So please take a look at paragraph two of that affidavit on the first page. In that paragraph, you represented the court through this affidavit that you relied upon the information provided to you by other town officials, specifically Heather Harpwood, among others.
Yes, that's correct.
And she is the position?
She's the assistant town manager.
And how long has she been the assistant town manager?
I believe over 10 years.
And you rely upon Jennifer Su, Jennifer Fatique?
Yes, sir.
And her position is devil.
Jennifer's the finance director for town.
And you really made a representation in there that you rely upon information provided to you by the individuals. Why did you rely on that information?
Well, these are individuals, two reasons, sir. One, as I noted, I've been town manager for two years, and much of the history here predates my tenure. And these individuals that I've noted are professionals of significant caliber and experience and expertise, and as town manager, I rely on them heavily for their assistance and guidance and counsel regarding matters, particularly matters of this nature.
So, referring now to exhibit number two of this hearing, which is a letter from Kevin Murphy, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, from the United States Environmental Protection Agency, and asking of the State what they have in common, if that's...
Yes, sir.
That's a letter to Kevin Murphy, as Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Were you familiar with the letter that Mr. Murphy sent to the Environmental Protection Agency requesting this information?
Yes, generally, I am.
And did you go through your office?
Yes.
Did you assist in preparation of the letter?
Yes.
And why did you send a request to the Environmental Protection Agency for information about the Wind Two grant?
Well, the reason we started with the federal level was, the ultimate source of the money was federal economic stimulus funds, even though they were passed through the Commonwealth. So we started there.
And then you got this letter from the Environmental Protection Agency in the course.
Yes, sir.
And what did that letter inform you?
Well, generally, it indicated that from the standpoint of the US EPA, they felt that the town had met the conditions necessary in their judgment on the Aera award.
Did that letter say that the loan forgiveness would be perpetuated by the Environmental Protection Agency?
No, sir. They said it was dependent upon the state, the state's determination ultimately and not theirs.
So upon receiving this letter from the Environmental Protection Agency, what did you next do?
Well, we next spoke with the appropriate state officials and saw a similar request to relieve.
How did you do that?
Transmitted a letter and also had telephone contacts with state officials.
And the specific question you were going to ask was what?
Whether, if the town were to cease operation of the turbines, we would be obligated to repay the Aera funds for which the town is obligated.
Did you receive a reply?
Yes.
And was there a reply by letter?
It was.
And got a letter of April 2, 2013.
It's attached.
Attached to your affidavit?
Yes, sir, it is attached.
And can you tell the court what you were advised by the Massachusetts Water Pollution Trust with respect to the loan forgiveness?
My memory is, in general, it was a very stern letter, alerting the town that in the state's judgment, our failure to continue operating the turbines would be cause for consideration of repayment of that obligation, and that furthermore, they were placing on us the requirement that we, that they monitor closely our operation of the turbines, and that we advise them anytime there was any change, and continue to communicate with them on a regular basis.
And is that the current status of your, of the dialogue between the Town of Falmouth and the Water Pollution Abatement Trust at this time?
Fundamentally, it is, yes. We've continued to stay in touch, continued to ask for relief, but that letter summarizes their, what I would term, a stern position of the matter.
So as of today, do you have any idea as to whether or not the Water Pollution Abatement Trust would consider a shutdown of these turbines by judicial action to be, that would jeopardize forgiveness?
My judgment, based on what I've been sent and been told verbally, yes, I believe it would trigger that.
You haven't been told otherwise?
No, sir.
Mr. Sousa, would you please explain to the court, I think you've already done it, but just quickly for purposes of my subsequent questions, how the court certifies free cashes?
At the end of the fiscal year, Your Honor, the, every municipality has carryover funds that although they were, many of them may have been appropriated, go unspent, and shortly after the beginning of the following fiscal year, the state, the state agency affirms the amount of what they call free cash that becomes available to the town, working through town meeting to appropriate, again, for lawful purposes, and, for instance, in the recent town meeting held last week, I've already noted that a considerable amount of those were expended.
This certified free cash, do you, as the town manager, have authority to spend it?
No, sir.
Does any town official have authority to spend certified free cash?
No.
How is certified free cash expended by the Town of Falmouth, or any town?
It must be reviewed by the Finance Committee and Town Meeting, and duly appropriated for a specific targeted purpose, only then can be spent.
For the appropriated purpose?
Yes.
Now, Falmouth recently had a town meeting, it's in November of 2013, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And under the Falmouth Home and Charter, how many town meetings do we have?
We have two per year, sir.
Now, the, did the town submit to town meeting some certified free cash for appropriation at the November town meeting?
We did, yes, sir.
Why would you do it at the November town meeting as opposed to, say, the April town meeting, which is going to be the budget?
Well, traditionally, the town has considered major capital improvements in November, although they're not required to, and the town is in a, been in a difficult position of falling far behind in upkeep on buildings, equipment, grounds, related infrastructure, and we've been working with Finance Committee, Town Meeting, and the Board of Selectmen in beginning to catch up on, in these many, many areas. So we went forward requesting that in that spirit in the last week's meeting.
Does the, at the April town meeting, which is when the annual budget is put together, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Do you, do you know the amount of certified free cash at that point?
No, we don't.
So you don't appropriate at the April town meeting?
No, correct.
Appropriate it in the summer coming?
Yes.
What is the total budget of the operating budget of the Town of Falmouth?
Oh, approximately $120 million, including the school side as well.
So at the November town meeting last week, how much certified free cash was appropriated?
A little over $2 million, by my memory. So a little less than $2 million remains.
Okay, well, what were some of the items that were appropriated at the November town meeting, the certification thing?
Well, in general, there were some equipment purchases, water meter replacements, some vehicles and equipment in public works, police vehicles, fire department rescue vehicle, and we also had some, several hundred thousand dollars allocated or appropriated for long-delayed building improvements and correcting some deteriorating conditions in town, the town and school side buildings.
Certified free cash is typically appropriated by town meeting for normal business expenses to the Town of Falmouth.
Yes, it's critical for that purpose, sir.
And for capital infrastructure purposes?
Yes.
With respect to the bonds, which are issued for the construction of Wind One, how does the Town of Falmouth budget the payment of those, of the annual payments they're due?
Well, we work with the finance, finance director, and we assemble the annual budget, and we're in the process of that now for FY15.
Is there a connection between revenue generated by the wind turbines from the production of electricity and the payment of the bonds?
Yes, sir.
How is that?
Well, the way this process was structured was such that the significant amount of the revenue attributable to the turbines is designated for regular bond payments, reducing the amount of that debt obligation.
So if the town, not, can we answer this question, if no revenue were to come in from the wind turbines because they were shut down, how would the town make these bond payments?
Our only recourse would be to take money from other sources, all, and to either reduce or eliminate town basic services or employees.
Thank you. No further questions? What's the timeline for scheduling special town meetings? What's required to do that?
I don't have all the details, and in front of me, they're in the charter, but essentially it can be done at the call of the Board of Selectmen for appropriate reasons and given appropriate occasions.
Okay. Do you happen to know what that approach, I mean, that time period is?
I don't have that committed to memory. I know it varies from town to town. We're talking about town.
I appreciate the fact we have two, and I appreciate this public knowledge requirements, and I appreciate the excellent April. I don't know without any lead as to whether or not, suggesting that we need to, if we call one in June, some deposition, and yes, Your Honor, I think, can we do that? We need to...
It could, Your Honor, yes.
You referenced that there would be, that you didn't have revenues from the turbines, that you'd have to go to other sources.
Other taxpayer sources, yes, sir.
And is certified free cash one of those sources that you could go to?
Were we having enough, yes, sir, which we do not.
Well, how much do you have in certified free cash?
Well, the amount that we've talked about that's less than $2 million, just to put it in this proper context, if I may, Your Honor, is less than the amount of a single payroll for the town and school side. So at one point, something under $1 million, $2 million may sound like a lot of money. But again, we're a large and complex organization, and our payroll alone works that amount of money for a single payroll.
But it's sitting there, available. Is that correct?
It is available for appropriation by town meeting for lawful purposes.
Okay, thank you. And where, the money that comes in from revenue, where does that money, revenue from the turbines, where does that money go?
Goes into the general fund and to the designated energy reserve account by a form of that was set up prior to my arrival.
Okay. And then can you expend funds out of that reserve account to pay?
I would have to review, again, I think that came up earlier, I'd have to review the conditions set on that reserve account and the limits placed on it, prior to my tenure.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you very much, Mr. Sousa.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Do you want to settle up? I can stay until 1:00. I'd like to come back this afternoon, so.
I think you get a sense of the argument as we set forth the evidence.
If you review Exhibits A and A1, A2 to Mr. Sousa's affidavit, this court will find that the next payment due is on February 1, 2014, in the amount of $277,593.75. The next payment following that is on April 15, 2014, in the amount of $15,471.88. That will total to $293,656.3 before that could be happened. There's evidence in the affidavit that there is $415,373 in the Energy Receipts Fund, and we have $2 million in certified free cash. Whatever gets done in certified free cash, there's enough in that font, in the Energy Receipts Fund, to meet those obligations before town meeting occurs. And I guess I would put this in the context of the preliminary injunction. I would urge the court, whatever they do on the preliminary injunction, to sort of advance this for the trials, generally, as the case. I would urge the court, whatever they do on the preliminary injunction, to sort of advance this for the trials, generally, as the case, zoning cases. But the next default date or payment dates would be August 1st, 2014, and October 15th, 2014. So, we have to reach a narrative before that, we could avoid that, those dates, and any of that. Just get that in the back. Now, as far as, as far as the possible default under these various obligations, again, I think we went through the Water Pollution Abatement Trust. You have the Corrected Schedule C before you, which says, from the Abatement Trust, that the principal will be forgiven as long as it complies with the regulatory agreement. And I asked Mr. Suso if he could identify anything in that agreement that required these projects to be maintained as energy efficient projects. And I think, if Your Honor focuses on that regulatory agreement, there's nothing in there that says anything about energy efficiency or maintaining the project as an energy efficient project. In fact, I think you can read just from that regulatory agreement that they've complied with everything they're supposed to do here. They've received the money, they've constructed the turbines, and they're now operational. That's it. And so the town, the state, is required to submit a certi, or issue a certificate of completion. And I think it is drafted here, but you can read the agreement. Let's see.
I think I have it though.
I have not, no.
Okay. So, I can build the facts, so I guess what?
And I believe that's referenced in that letter that's attached to the, did I get my affidavit? That was an April 2nd letter from the state with Mr. Suso referenced.
The hearing exhibit?
Oh, it was in the - Well, I'll leave it for the court, I can't look at it, but it's the April 2nd letter from the state to the town, which Mr. Suso identified as coming to the conclusion that the debt will not be forgiven. I don't believe it says that at all. And it talks about maintaining it as an energy efficient project, there is no forgiveness.
I'm going to share the time, and I'll make you come back this afternoon. Tell me what you want me to do in terms of the irreparable harm issues and the balancing of the evidence.
Your Honor, I think your prior decision already recognized the harm to the defendants, the Andersons.
I trust the likelihood of success on the merits found by the CDA.
And we did some, had the disrevidence on the harm to the -
What do you want me to do, you have a couple of minutes, they're going to be telling you what they want you to do in the moment.
We want the turbines shut down. We believe that's the only reasonable remedy here, given the fact that what Mr. Gore offers in his affidavit is nothing more than he offered back in 2010, when nothing was done, and here we are three years later. As far as the town is concerned, I think the facts prove themselves, there's no danger of immediate harm to the town, they could meet their payments under the bond obligations. There's no immediate requirement for payment of principal under the Water Abatement Trust, and there's no requirement in the immediate future to pay anything for the renewables certificate. And I would just refer you to Mr. Anderson's statement too. At the very least, we want seven to seven, but if they complete half in the last year, in their home probably, a quiet December. If it goes to seven to seven, and after January 1st, so be it, but if they could have a period of time for quiet over the holiday season, they would be questioning.
Want to skip?
Yes, Your Honor, please. Just very quickly, I'll tell you what I'm asking for, I may represent the middle ground. I am asking on behalf of the 13 residents I was representing who lived here when one went to, that the court ordered today from the bench that the town operate Wind One and Wind Two only during the hours of 7:00 AM in the morning to 7:00 PM at night. That was the status quo for more than a year and a half, a year and a half until this past October. And two boards in town have recognized that there's a problem with these turbines. The Board of Selectmen voted in January to take them down. That was not possible politically, but it was a humanist vote to take them down. And the zoning Board of Appeals has ruled that they are a nuisance. And I think that the case before you is one of real substance, and there is a problem here, the happy scenario isn't going to happen. Everybody may have wanted in the beginning that these would be symbols of renewable energy and that they would save the town money on electricity costs and maybe generate some funds. I think these two turbines are always going to lose money to the town, and I think the town has lived with that and can continue to live with that. And I think that the balanced approach in response to the Andersons' application for a preliminary injunction is to pass the town, tell the town, as of today, to go back to the seven to seven curfew while the settlement discussions are going on, and I would rule that if it be that way, it'll further order of this court.
Your Honor, Mr. Watt has made some issues out of the affidavit of Mr. Suso, but I suggest to the court that the affidavit that Mr. Suso has submitted does set forth back in which the town, in which the court can find that a shutdown of the wind turbines would cause serious consequences to the town. Would not necessarily cause an existential threat to the town, the town's not going to go out of business, but it would hurt. And the monies that are lost from the revenues, and the monies that would have to be made up to cover for these losses, have to come from someplace. And the town provides a lot of services to a lot of people, and somebody is going to wind up on the short end of this, unfortunately, it could happen. But there are adverse consequences. And Mr. Watt, though, he is interpreting contracts without the benefit of having the parties to the contract here to discuss it. As far as we know, and all the information that Mr. Suso has, a shutdown of the turbines might trigger a default under the agreement, causing the Aera loan to be paid back. We can't say that that's absolutely not happening, but we can't say it won't happen, is what I'm asking to be believed of it. In terms of the immediate future, Your Honor, the court says to turn the turbines seven to seven, of course, we're absolutely going to do it. We're also going to continue talking to these folks. As I explained to you earlier, I came to court this morning with an agreement, thinking we might actually have it signed, and it might ultimately be signed. Your Honor addressed a number of issues in your colloquy with us today that we are already talking about, and that will go on. But I would ask the court to consider the adverse effects on not just, on the Town of Thomas itself and the whole citizens, because this is a significant investment that the town made. And we were trying to find some way out of this, we're trying to find some, some solution to this. And we'll accept the court's judgment on the preliminary injunction, but I think maybe consensus is yet that seven to seven might be the appropriate solution. And we agree to continue to seek resolution. We want a resolution as much as they want a resolution.
Thank you very much, I will issue a lot of, I wish to, I'm not going to constrain myself, but you'll get something at least by tomorrow, maybe so.